Good afternoon. I'll call the meeting to order for the February 23 study session. Roll call, please.
I will have to do an oral roll call. Councilmember Brenner, councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Blom.
Here.
Councilmember Duffield. Mayor Protem Muldoon.
Present in spirit.
Via Zoom. And Mayor Avery.
Here. We're going to now turn to current business and the first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. So councilmember Brenner, do you have any clarifications needed?
No.
Councilmember O'Neal.
I have none.
Councilmember Dixon.
I have none.
Councilmember Blom.
None.
Councilmember Duffield. Mayor Protem Muldoon.
None.
And I have none as well. Next item is a presentation from former mayor Nancy Gardner regarding the Orange Coast River Park.
Nancy Gardner, Orange Coast River Park Conservancy, and thank you for this opportunity to update you. In the interest of time, I'm going to keep it as short as I can, so I'm going to hit the highlights. Please understand that a lot of other stuff has been going on. One of the things we've learned over this past year is the importance of the outdoors. When facilities were shut down, to be able to go outside and work out or just get out of the house has been a lifesaver. And we have an area that could provide so many more outside opportunities if handled correctly, and this is Orange Coast River Park. As a reminder, it's that area from the mouth of the Santa Ana River up through Fairview Park in Costa Mesa and into the Huntington Beach and the wetlands there. It has different owners, different agencies, and that's one of the reasons it hasn't lived up to its potential. There isn't a lot of coordination. And it was the late Louise Greeley, who I believe was the first to say, what if it were envisioned and managed as a single entity? Think of the benefits that would accrue from that kind of coordination. And it was an idea that instantly caught on. The three cities and the county chipped in and a concept plan was developed. And from that, then, an MOU was drafted. This is how it's all going to work. And the three cities signed on. Unfortunately, the county didn't. We never got a reason, just couldn't get it out of their legal department. Well, we're going to have a new supervisor shortly, so hopefully whoever that is will be an ally and will give us a chance to readdress that and hopefully bring it back for an agreement. As a nonprofit, we are constantly looking for funds, but not just for ourselves. We look for our partners. And early on, we were able to identify some small grants. And as a result, each of the three cities created a committee of residents to develop a vision plan for their part of the river. I will wager that some of you up there have not read that plan. In fact, some of you don't know it exists. And that is not a criticism, that is simply an observation that with term limits, you know, we cycle through, we get new energy and new ideas on one end, and we lose some knowledge on the other. So that's one of the purposes of me being here today, is just to familiarize some of you, remind you the others that already know of us. The big idea right now is a master plan, to get all the stakeholders together, figure out all the amenities, how they'd all fit together, how it will work. And thanks to councilwoman Dixon and former councilmember Petros, we had funds to hire a consultant, and he put together the scope of work. So we have an RFP ready to go when we have the funds. We have been pursuing funds in different avenues. We hope that at some point, the city of Newport Beach will be a participant, but that is a conversation for a different day and probably a different economy right now. We do have an ask, though. I mentioned the vision plans. They're very good, ours particularly, of course, I was chair. But they're over 10 years old, and a lot of things have come up since then. And our ask is that the park speeches and PBNR Commission review the plan and update it. And we're going to ask the other cities to do that as well. And once they're complete, what we will do is consolidate them. And that will not be the final plan, there'll be huge gaps and everything, but it will put us much more in the direction that we want to go, which is making this so much more of a resource for our residents. And that is a gallop through Orange Coast River Park. So if I can answer any questions, I'll be glad to. Otherwise, enjoy your totes, you don't have to declare them because they only cost a couple of dollars.
Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, former Mayor Gardner. I thought the city Newport Beach last year, didn't we allocate some funds?
Yes, and I didn't know, given the status, when we went through the, I sat through the presentation of the planning meeting, and didn't come up. Didn't know whether the, whether that item would still be there, given the circumstances. Just for some of you who may not be aware, thanks to, again, the councilmember Dixon, a placemaker was put in the budget for, I think it was $20,000, with the understanding that we would go to the other cities in the county and say, hey, Newport's willing to put this up, if you all put it up, then we'd have some money. And that would make us much more attractive to the granters, who'd say, okay, everybody's got skin in the game, it's really going to happen. And so we had to say, we had Newport on board, we were just going, ready to go to the other two cities in the county, when someone in China coughed. And that's just put a hold on everything, as so many other nonprofits, we've just been frozen almost for this last year.
But those ones, I asked the city manager way over there, aren't they held in abeyance?
No, so we did have 20,000 originally appropriated, contingent upon the contributions from the other cities, but given that those hadn't come in yet, as part of looking at during the COVID period with the project, so it's been put on suspension, I guess, for lack of a better word. And certainly, when other cities come forward, you know, I think that's a time to consider to appropriate it back into the budget.
Okay, so it's in some...
Right, so as I say, we're, we're understanding that these are tough times and maybe other cities are not in as good a shape as are, but we will be making the presentations to them and making the ask, and we will continue, as I say, to pursue the other avenues. But I just sort of assumed it got sort of slipped away with the, with the new budgets.
So separate from the funding, though, you're asked, the ask today is if our PBNR Commission would be looking at these plans separately, so we don't need funds to do that?
No, no, this is, as I say, the plan is there, it's a good plan, but it's dated, so refresh it. I mean, I'm thinking of dog park, you know, there's some areas there where nobody lives around, maybe that's a possibility for that end of town, because we know how difficult it is to find a site for a dog park. So there may be other ideas like that that are timely, that we weren't thinking of 10 years ago.
Okay, so that even, this is a study session, so maybe that would be something that we would refer for consideration by PBNR? Is that what this process would be?
Yeah, I didn't know whether I have to then make, has one of you asked to have it put on the agenda, and the rest of you approve that it goes on the agenda? I don't know what the process is for that, because when I was on the council, I could just say, would you please do this?
Well, after today's discussion, or after this item, maybe we could decide what we do with that.
Anyway, I will contact, talk to you as far as the procedures, as far as moving that along, but I hope you'll all approve of it.
I would support that if it is to be determined that we send it along to PBNR.
Any other questions?
I have one. Nancy, could you just quickly, if banning ranch were to happen in some form that they're envisioning, how would that mix in with our portion of River Park?
Banning ranch has always been included. We just, we didn't take a position in terms of whether it would be 80% under the city's plan or 100% under the conservancy's plan. It's always been part of it. And so they will be involved, they are a stakeholder, and when the big plan is created, banning ranch will be part of whichever, however banning ranch ends up, which it looks like is going to end up as all open space and a part of the park.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much for letting me do that.
Next item on the agenda is an update on homeless strategies, and we have our, our team here.
Good evening, good evening, afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Carol Jacobs, I'm your Assistant City Manager, and I have with me our outreach team, and we hope to give you an update today on what we've been doing with our homeless population. Here is really our issue, our residents are concerned with those experiencing homelessness, and they have requested staff often to take, to take action and to help resolve the issue. We know that there's between 45 and 50 homeless people currently living either outdoors or in their cars within the community. That number changes on a daily basis, and it can change sometimes significantly depending on, depending on what's going on. And we continue to focus our efforts to assist the homeless population. One thing we want the community to understand is, you know, we are, we are managing this problem, we're not going to be able to permanently solve it forever, in our lifetime, probably. Here's some, here's some of the legal considerations that we are working under. We have the Martin versus Boise decision about anti-camping, but we also have a lack of shelter space, and we have some lack of services when it comes to outreach, mental health is very scarce, we have some resources but not enough, and we continue to, to work within those constraints as we, as we work with our homeless population. This is our homeless team. There's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and we have a lot of resources going into working with our homeless population. It's a very complex problem, and we need a lot of different kinds of skillsets to, to ensure that we can move that person from the streets or into their, from their car, into temporary and then into permanent shelter, into permanent homes. These are two of the, two of the most important people on our homeless team, and this is Natalie and Cynthia. These two women have done an absolutely outstanding job for the city of Newport Beach. They are out in the field daily, they can tell you stories about almost every homeless person out there, what their story is, who they are, how long they've been there, and you'll hear a little bit about that later. But they, they are kind of the, the tip of the spear, they're the ones that are coordinating many of our efforts, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. I'm going to pass it over to Natalie now, as she talks about her demographics a bit.
Good afternoon, Mayor Avery, and members of the city council. My name is Natalie Bosmudjan, I'm your homeless coordinator. From our last meeting last week, Officer Carter and I have designated that we have about 50 people experiencing homelessness in the city at this point. As Carol mentioned, that number can fluctuate due to many different circumstances, such as weather conditions, shelter space availability, and people moving in and out of the city to go to appointments or to stay with family for a temporary time. With that being said, please remember that in 2019, during our federally mandated point and time count, our number was 64 people experiencing homelessness. This number will fluctuate, but we are working with the population daily to find the right opportunities for everybody. Our population is predominantly white and male, and as you can see from the age demographics, it skews 45 to 65, with six people over 65 years old. Those are our most vulnerable people with their age and likely medical conditions, and we are working diligently to find opportunities for those people as well. We often receive citizen concerns about people experiencing homelessness or being in distress in public spaces, on the sidewalks, at bus stops. We welcome those contacts, I get a lot of emails and phone calls that will help us when we go out in the field to know where to look for somebody, a basic physical description to know whom to approach. Most times, within an hour of receiving the concern, I can be in my car and on-site talking to that person. If I am unavailable, I certainly can reach out to Officer Carter. I can also deploy our CityNet team, and I'll discuss them in more detail. They're very responsive by phone and text to go if I am unavailable to go. So when I go out, I will identify myself as a city employee, I will ask some probing questions to find out who the person is, what their name is, where were they before they were in Newport Beach, if it's somebody I've never met. I'll ask their veteran status to try and build a rapport with that person. I'm a complete stranger walking up to them. Oftentimes, it's better if I go first, rather than a uniformed officer, given people's perceptions of the police, and also with CityNet, they may have appointments and they're not available. So it really is this team idea that I can be the first point of contact and find out what that person needs. If the person refuses help or doesn't want to talk, I just review the basics of what they need to comply with in that area, to keep it clean, what the curfews are, and if they're violating any municipal codes, I can then call a police officer out to reinforce that we do have rules in place to follow. I finally end that conversation by telling the person, I'll be back out to see them, the officer may come, so they're not surprised if a police officer comes, and also that our CityNet team will be out, to build that rapport and to let them know, we notice you, we care, and we will be back to assist you. So our CityNet contractors, they provide our social services for us. They do a key role in the city as far as helping people get their documents prepared, reunifying with their families. They provide an array of services that I may not have the training to do or the authorization to sign. They can also field calls from residents and people experiencing homelessness through their hotline. They connect people to the social services, whether that's a sober living facility, veteran services, they can take people to appointments in their marked van, so it looks correct when they get to that facility. But the biggest piece they do is they complete the required paperwork for the county of Orange. Oftentimes, a starting point might be getting somebody their first photo identification in years, and that's the first piece they need to be able to complete the paperwork. And then ultimately, they work hand in hand with us, we meet with them out in the field, we meet in a monthly meeting with their supervisor to really keep that team approach working in the field. So the basic process is city staff or CityNet staff will make contact with the person and start to establish rapport and ask some of those probing questions to identify their needs. And again, it could be their housing needs, budgeting for housing, they could realize they were eligible for veterans' benefits, they didn't know that before we talked to them. And again, the most important piece they complete is a vulnerability index. I'm not going to go through the whole index, but the questions are very probing, such as, are you a survivor of domestic assault? Do you have a traumatic brain injury? Years of being homeless on the streets? And from that index, that report, they are then entered into the county's coordinated entry system. They also can complete a housing assessment, and this gets into more detail about budgeting, housing options, would they want to live alone, do they want to live in a group home because it would be cheaper? So they're doing that work for us. Once somebody is entered in the county system, that's the formal housing process. CityNet also employs housing navigators that work with the county to advocate for people to find the best housing solution. We don't want the fastest or the cheapest, we want the best solution for that individual so they don't fall back out of housing. So it may take days, weeks, months to find that proper opportunity, but then they'll stay more permanently housed than bouncing in and out of homelessness. And then finally, the good day arrives, when we can help with the move-in logistics, whether that's providing appliances, working with the leasing office, and literally handing that person a key to a new housing unit. Shifting gears a bit, we have also formed a rapid response team. Our city manager, Grace Leung, assembled us in December of 2019. We're an interdepartmental group that goes out to provide street outreach. We take a fire captain with us, police officers, our senior services specialists from Oasis, and recreation staff. And as a team, we go out and we assess the conditions where the person is, we can offer to clean up the area with our Public Works team, we can provide a primer on how to access your senior services, and we can also render medical aid if somebody is in distress at that point. Again, it's a team effort, we take different combinations of staff out with us, and it also helps train frontline staff that works in the field to identify if somebody is in need of our services. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Officer Cynthia Carter.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me. My name is Cynthia Carter, I am a police officer with the city Newport Beach. I'm currently assigned as the homeless liaison officer. I've been in this role about eight or nine months, give or take. So it's great that Natalie and Carol could discuss some of the processes and the different things that we're up against and the demographics of the homeless population. With all of that said, it's also important to know that we do have success stories. They may not come every day, and they may not come by the millions, but success is success, and it's slow-going, because every homeless individual requires different attention, different resources, and so it's to kind of show the whole picture with it, with an end. And case management essentially is also the end. So first, I'm going to discuss some of the successes. We have Jason Olson. Many of you, if you read the Week in Review, you will know his story, we've talked about him quite often in the last eight months. Jason is from Newport Beach, he is, he went to Newport Harbor High School and graduated from there. He became an alcoholic shortly after high school, and the alcoholism continued until his girlfriend passed away due to alcohol-related illness, and then it just perpetuated from there. He became homeless, staying at the Newport Pier for over five years. It took a team to continually encourage and engage him, preferably when he was not intoxicated. And eventually, I believe it was in July, well, actually it was June, that he decided to go into a medical detox facility. He's been sober since then, it's been a little over eight months that he's been sober. He's working full-time, he actually got his old job back and is loving it, he's thriving, saving money to be able to move out of his sober living facility and continue to excel and stay sober. We're very proud of him, I continually have contact with him, every single week, he checks in. So just, like, we house somebody and there's continual case management and to let them know that we're still here for them. The next person that I want to talk about is Chris. Chris was homeless in our city for about seven years. He lost his job, he was a construction worker, lost his job, and kind of found his way to Newport Beach. I couldn't give you the exact reason as to how, but I do know that he felt a little safer in Newport Beach than other places. It took a lot of time and a lot of negotiating and trying to encourage him to reach for a better life. On December 23, he entered a medical detox facility in Desert Hot Springs, went to rehab, he'll hit 60 days on Saturday and is moving into a sober living facility. He's, since then, he's reunited with his family, it had been seven years since he had talked to any of them, he has five children. And all he wants to do is get a job. It's amazing the itch that it created for him to then be a productive member of society. And this is a really good time, because I'm sure construction is going off the rails with everybody being home. So the next one, I also want to highlight that, again, not every homeless individual is the same. Take, for example, Yuliana and Christian. They are a young couple who were affected by the COVID, or by the COVID pandemic, just like many of us were. And Yuliana lost her job, and Christian was working in Newport Beach, and his job went from full-time to part-time. They left their rental location with dignity, didn't want to stay and not pay, they moved to the Newport Beach Pier where they were sleeping in a tent. They would pack up every, every day to be respectful of the area at 5:00 AM so that nobody knew that they were homeless, and were continuing to look for work for full-time so that they can get off the streets. Natalie spoke of the rapid response team, how we are a team, all the departments are. Public Works employee was actually someone who identified them as being homeless and in need of help. So I got a call from Public Works to reach out to that couple. It took, it took a village, it was myself, Natalie, CityNet, SOS, to get together and to help them find a location that they could afford with the small amount of income that they were taking in part-time. After, two days after they got housed, they both got full-time jobs, and they're still working, they're saving for, to buy a couple bikes for themselves so they don't have to pay for the bus as they go to work, and they're doing very well. I continually talk to them and offer case management to them. It just shows that it's affecting, homelessness affects everybody, it doesn't have to be one cookie cutter, cookie cutter way. Lastly, I want to discuss our veterans. We have housed, just in Newport Beach, we've housed three veterans ourself, and it shows that we truly care about the men and women who serve in our military. Orange County has done leaps and bounds with veterans in terms of opening veteran-specific permanent supportive housing. So far, I believe there's been two different locations, and this is just to show that we have, we're really taking to heart our veterans. I know we're currently working with two others right now, trying to get them vouchers for housing. Just for overall statistics, it's always good to see big numbers. Just in the last year, we've housed, permanently housed 14 people. Yesterday, a couple moved in, so that would actually make it to 16. So 16 total people in the last year. We have six people currently going through sober living or rehab facilities that were previously homeless in Newport Beach, and we've done nine family reunifications. Great numbers, a good start, and we just continue to strive to help our homeless individuals. I will give it to Carol, thank you so much.
Another strategy in our toolbox, which we'll get to use very soon, is our temporary homeless shelter with the city of Costa Mesa. The bridge shelter is scheduled to open in May of 2021, and will provide 20 shelter beds for Newport Beach. The bridge shelter will provide various onsite services, including housing navigation, counseling, and job searching opportunities. Given the transitory nature of homelessness individuals many, within many cities in Orange County, the regional partnership makes sense to allow cities to leverage resources together. With our shared border, a partnership with the, with the city of Costa Mesa provides an opportunity for a very beneficial partnership. The city manager developed a memorandum of understanding with the city of Costa Mesa to utilize the shelter beds in their new temporary shelter, which is located at 3175 Airway. Based on a recent Costa Mesa study session, the bridge shelter is going to cost approximately $2.6 million to operate annually, and we'll be sharing in those costs at about 100, at about $1 million a year. By sharing resources with Costa Mesa, both agencies can provide services to our respective homeless populations without duplicating efforts. The partnership will also make the bridge shelter more competitive for state and federal grants, and we anticipate that that may certainly be an opportunity in the near future. In addition to the Costa Mesa shelter, the city will also have access to the new Yale's Transition Center in Santa Ana, which is planned to open at the end of March, and that is a 425-bed shelter. We also have some temporary access to the Huntington Beach Shelter in Huntington Beach, that's a 70, 174-bed shelter. So we do have resources, as you know, also CityNet, because they have resources countywide, if we can make a connection between a homeless individual here, and if they have a tie in Anaheim or Placentia, CityNet has the ability to connect those in, in those cities as well. So we, we bring them, we bring them back home to where they're most comfortable, and so CityNet has been, has been really good at doing that for us, particularly when we haven't had shelter beds. The other, the other group I want...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question on that, on that last slide. I noticed that Costa Mesa's been talking recently about IKEA donating all of the furniture that's going into that bridge shelter. I know FFNE was part of what we were paying in to, on our partnership with them, so it might be worth checking just to see if it's been donated, whether they still need some of the money that we've sent over. Thank you.
Another group I really want to give kudos to and thank is our homeless ad hoc committee. This is a group of residents with an amazing skillsets that they've offered free of charge to us, and they've really helped walk us through many of the issues and concerns that the residents have had and offered solutions. They help identify with resources, and they help us connect with other members in the community. And this is, this is, if we had to pay these folks, this would be a lot of money, I'm just telling you right now. They have experience in mental health, sociology, nonprofits, faith leaders, business and government leaders, and they have been a great resource for the rapid outreach team, Natalie and I, and Cynthia, as we try to navigate all of the resources that can be available to our homeless population. And finally, I have to say, we do have county, state, and federal partners that are very important to us. They are those, those are funding arms that we can hopefully reach out to and will be able to provide some additional resources for us. Many of you know about our project... Many of you know about our Project Room Key that, that happened a while ago. We did place 33 individuals in that program. Unfortunately, when the program ends, so does the, so do the homes. But we did place 16 people in, in permanent situations out of that, out of that process. So what that really tells us is we've got to take that baby step to get them stabilized first before we put them into that permanent situation. The state is continuing to talk about Project Home Key, which will convert motels into permanent supportive housing. And there's some talk at the federal level about the universal housing voucher program, which would make folks eligible, once they're eligible, they're eligible, very much like Medicare or the SNAP program or any of those kinds of programs. And it, so it would really expand kind of the Section 8 programming and would allow much more people easier access into the system so that they could get some, some housing vouchers. Finally, the last piece of the puzzle and the piece that will actually eventually solve this problem is housing. If you, if we house these people on a permanent situation with support, we can get them off the street permanently. Cynthia and CityNet and Natalie have had some great successes, but this is the ultimate solution. And the council authorized an RFQ back in February of 2020. We've recommended two firms in a very unique process that we'd like those two firms to, basically, we want them to compete. Newport is a very unique spot. We have some very interesting land uses and constraints that we have within, within our community, and so we want these two experts at permanent supportive housing to compete. And what we want them to do is to bring to this council conceptual presentation of the project and the housing units that they would be able to provide. The RFP called for 50 units, but based on whatever they find out in the community, it could be something different, and so we want to give them that opportunity to present that to the council. They need to come to us with a viable site that they have reassurance that they'll actually be able to put an offer on the site and they would be actually able to purchase it. We want to know what kind of zoning changes the site may need in order to accommodate a permanent supportive housing site. And one of the most important things and one of the strongest points of each of these developers is their public outreach. They have really been able to work in communities where people don't really understand what permanent supportive housing is, and they've been able to go out into the community and do outreach and gain community support for the project. And that is going to be key here, and we want to make sure that they have a very strong public outreach component to their proposal. And then the best proposal wins. And then the council will get to decide which one, which, which proposal you would like to move forward with. And then through the budget process, we'll be, we'll be making some recommendations about funding that at about a $3 million level, and city manager will come to you through the budget process with that. And we get a lot of questions from the community about how, how can I help? It is not helpful if people give directly to homeless people in the community. That is, that is not, that is not helpful long-term. It's helpful for an immediate term, but it's not helpful long-term. We want people to understand that this is a very complex issue, as I think Cynthia and Natalie have really tried to explain to you today, that this is not just a one-and-done. This is months and months and sometimes years' worth of work to get somebody to accept help.
Ms. Dixon, you wait. Okay.
Oh, I'm almost done. We also, you know, if you, if you have resources to give, give them to known charitable organizations that work with homeless individuals. Some great organizations out there that really provide direct services, and we would certainly encourage that. During Project Room Key and when we've housed a couple of folks, it's about $100 a night to house somebody in a motel for a night. If you're interested in doing that, there's, there's a solid, you know, here's your $100, here's a room night. And then also, we have, we have developed a, it's a tax-deductible site, NewportBeachCA.gov/give, and you can donate there, and that, those funds will be used to directly help the homeless with bus passes, room nights, reunification costs, those immediate needs that we need to provide to, to our homeless population, we can do that way. To date, we've gotten about $1,300 from the community from that site, so that's where we are with that. And with that, I, I would, I would be happy to answer any questions along with the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Carol and Natalie. Couple of questions. First of all, thank you. I know this is hard work, and I, as soon as you help a few, then there are more to come. So when you gave the number of about 50 currently and that we, you have helped, could we, say again, how much in the last, I don't know, 12 months, how many people have you facilitated their transition out of homelessness? Twenty-nine. And, and you well know, because you see the emails, we see, that I think the community is ready for the temporary shelter. Their patience is wearing thin. And not, I don't intend that, it's not a criticism. I, I hear you. This is a very, I, I tell people, one homeless at a time, and it requires a great deal of work. On the process of awareness of how to help the people, the individuals, or the problems that they sprout up at McFadden Square or along Newport Boulevard, do you, do you have your ready response team, are they reporting in? Is the best way for you to know that there are homeless in tents on the pier, is that for you to get a report from somebody? Or do you, do you have surveillance on your own?
It, it happens a number of ways. First of all, our Public Works crews, Cynthia, Natalie, CityNet, they're all out, they're all out in the field on a daily basis, and we know pretty much where these folks hang out. And also, the community is very, very helpful in letting us know where people are beginning to show up. And that, that's key. If we can learn early on where somebody is, we can get out and do that outreach immediately as opposed to waiting for weeks or months, and sometimes things tend to accumulate, and it makes, it makes it harder to, to work with the individual. So yes, we know exactly, Natalie and Cynthia could rattle off everyone's name down at the pier and McFadden, in the McFadden Plaza area. So we, we are continuing to work with those folks. There are some folks that are very, very hesitant to, to accept any help, and they, and they, some of them, one or two at least, really like being there. And those are, those are challenges that we're continuing to try to work with. But as some of the success stories also, you know, that Cynthia also explained, is after a year or two of working with somebody, somebody, the light changed and somebody decided to accept help. And that's, that's the golden ticket for us. That's, that's the thing we're working for, and I think we're really trying very hard to work with the community. I, you know, as we know in the emails, you know, the community is frustrated and they shouldn't have to deal with this, and we all wholeheartedly agree with that, that this is a very sad situation for many people. And we're doing the best we can to work with these people so that they can have a better life and they can see that there's something better than, than living outside or in their car.
Well, and that's, I agree with you. Speaking of the community and setting expectations, so May 1st is the date, it's been tracking, pushed back, but if you're saying May 1st is the date, could you explain what we can expect? Will all the homeless, all the 50 or whatever, approximately that number, will they all be? Of course, we only have 20 beds, and then you've identified maybe Santa Ana or Huntington Beach. What is, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, what should the community expect once we have access to the shelter?
That's a good question. We are, actually, we're working with Costa Mesa right now to, to work out the processes and how we're all going to manage this, you know, administratively. But I think what you'll see is, is you'll see a small, a small reduction in the homeless population. People need to be, people want to go. We have several people that are willing to go to shelters. We just don't have any place to put them. So I think you'll see some, some get into shelters, and the second somebody gets into a shelter, then three more people show up and we have to continue to work with them. So, you know, I don't want to set the expectation that this is the cure-all. It's, it's another tool, but we still have to use all of the tools on our tool belt to, to, to make this impact as little as we can on the community, and that's really our goal, is to minimize and manage this in the best way we can. I think that having a shelter will help. It will help in a lot of ways. You know, we have another tool where we can talk to people and say, mm, you can't, you really can't put a tent up here. You know, you need to, you need to not have that here, but here's how we can help you not have to have that tent, you know? We can now put you in a shelter. We can now offer some additional services.
Well, I guess, just to be direct, can anyone still be camping on the beach or in any of these public spaces once we have access to the shelter?
I'm going to let law enforcement answer that one.
Hi. It's a good question. It's important to recognize that the shelter is a tool. It's just a stepping stone to what actually needs to happen is permanent supportive housing, affordable housing, and permanent housing situations. It's just a tool. With only 20 beds, it's not going to solve homelessness. If they're, like with Martin V. Boise, if there is an available, appropriate shelter bed available, camping can be enforced. However, if all 20 shelter beds are taken, that is no longer an available, appropriate shelter bed. So I think that we'll see the population fluctuate a little bit, but it's not going to solve the problem.
All right. So you mentioned Project Room Key, and is, did you say $100 per night for a hotel room?
That's, that's what it costs the city to, to place somebody in a shelter.
So, but you said that some people, some homeless-
In a shelter.
-are ready to go into a shelter, so presumably they'd be ready to go into Project Room Key to a hotel room?
If Project Room Key existed anymore, yes.
Okay, so if, if $100, so we can't even, even if we had the money, we can't?
So we, we are, I'm sorry, let me, let me, let me back up a little bit. We are occasionally putting people in motel rooms to bridge when they can get into a shelter. So if we know somebody's willing to go into a shelter, we can place them in a motel for several, several nights, nights in which we've done in the past, to get them into the shelter, to get them off the street, to begin that transition for them. So we have done that with the resources and with CityNet. So we do that to a limited resource, but if folks want us to up that game a little bit, that, that's where we're, we're saying that $100 a night would go.
So back to the NewportBeachCA.gov/give, so an appeal to the community to contribute, and ACT Fund could be used for providing funds for our own Newport Beach Project Room Key, if you will.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think that's an important opportunity for the community, who is, remains very concerned, that this is one way to help people in a very humane and constructive way. Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Ms. Brenner.
I just, I just amazed how far we've come in two years, and when I hear you guys talk, it really brings home to me where we were when I first got on council two years ago, and we were all, we all liked deer in the headlights, sort of, at that time. And you guys really have a handle on it. And I spent a long time talking with Officer Carter today, and I was excited to learn about the BeWell OC, the, yeah, BeWell OC with the Mental Health Services, that the county actually is being very proactive in that area. They've opened one facility, there are two more scheduled to open, and we do have access to a couple of other shelters that we can sometimes get one or two people into. So you guys are so aware of every opportunity and every resource that's out there, and you're just doing a remarkable job. And I, as I mentioned to Cynthia today, the mental health issue is one of the biggest for our citizens because sometime, you know, if people, people have a heart for helping people who are down on their luck, but they get afraid when they're dealing with people that seem to have mental health issues. And so I was asking Cynthia what you do when you encounter a homeless person or any person that seems to be aggressive or threatening or whatever, and they told me that if you feel like you're in imminent danger, that calling 911 is the way to go. But if you encounter a homeless person or any other person who is, seems to be disoriented or out of it, or, and, and you feel is like a danger, that calling our non-emergency number at the police department, the 644-3717 number, that they can ascertain whether this is someone that they need to really make contact with, and if they need to evaluate them and, and figure out how to get them in to help. So I think that's, that's the part that's really hard for our citizens to deal with and, but you guys are on top of it, and there is help down the line from the county in that area, and it's important for our citizens to know that they don't have to be in a situation where they feel unsafe, that they really can call the police department, and they'll be out there to, and you guys can evaluate what the situation is with that person. So I just want to thank you because you've all really stepped up to the plate. And I know it's hard for our citizens because it is such a revolving door, and when we help 18 people, then we have, you know, 20 more that come in. So it's frustrating for all of us, but it's a problem we're going to be dealing with for the foreseeable future, and getting these systems in place is what's going to help us to get through it. So thank you all so much.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, thank you. So to Ms. Brenner's point, I think the reason that it felt like we were a deer in headlights is because people were actually driving cars directly at us, so, or at least it certainly felt that way. We were, I mean, I remember when both this room and the room behind us, in the community room, were filled with, with people remarkably upset at us over the homelessness issue here in Newport Beach, and so we, we took on a holistic change. And so Natalie has led that effort, and that's one of the best things that I think we've, we've done, was transitioning, you know, you over from library. I hope that's one of the best things that's happened to you. I will, I will let everyone know, I think we've said this before, but Natalie was named as the Employee of the Year for the City of Newport Beach last year, and we have over 700 employees. It's a big deal. I appreciate everything that you're doing to, to help people up and off the streets because, you know, I don't think anyone is okay with seeing people sleep on the streets. It's just, it's, it's not, it's, we're not okay with it. No one's comfortable with, with seeing folks in that, in that kind of situation. Trust us when we say we understand the frustration, that it's coming through an email, phone calls, in-person conversations. We understand that frustration. We are doing a lot to remedy the situation, but to the point that you've been hearing, it's, it's a long-lasting situation that's going to be here for, for quite some time, and, and the, having a shelter will be, will help significantly, but it's certainly not the fix. I mean, it's, it's part of a much larger process that we've put in place and been working through. I probably would have a lot more to say because we, we talk about this issue so often, especially with our ad hoc committee. But fortunately for us, we've also seen a lot of communication coming out from our city manager in our weekly updates. If you are not signed up for those, I encourage you to do so. We, we usually provide people updates on what our response has been to trying to work with folks who are homeless in our community on a weekly basis. So I encourage you to, to go ahead and, and subscribe to that. Thank you.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you. I want to start, Cynthia and Natalie, thank you, guys. Amazing and often thankless work, and, you know, I see the emails coming through and yelling at you guys, and why aren't we working faster? And I'm sorry. You know, I think that it's tough. We know how hard it is. You know, I've tried to interact multiple times with some of our populations, and it's difficult, to say the least. So I commend you on it. Just two questions. One regarding the bus depot and how the county plays into that. Is, is that our responsibility? Do the sheriffs play a part in that? I'm just, and I apologize for my ignorance in it, but if you can enlighten me, that would be wonderful.
Councilman Blom, that is a joint effort, actually. OCTA rents the property from the Irvine Company. The Orange County sheriffs do have a task force that go and monitor and coordinate with Officer Carter and our police officers. There is a, no trespassing that's enforced from 11:00 PM, 11:15 PM- that's enforced from 11:00 PM, 11:15 PM to 5:00 AM. At that point, if you're there overnight, the officers can cite you for trespass. You may see, if you're there early in the morning or late at night, people will relocate to the sidewalk, which is considered public space, and they know they can move back on the OCTA property at 5:00 AM. We also deploy our CityNet team up there several times a week. And we do see people come in and out of town using the buses, and also going to their appointments and coming back to Newport Beach. But that is a team effort with OC sheriffs and our police department.
Wonderful. And then the last question, what do you guys need on the ground from us? I mean, what, we've heard a lot of presentations and what we're, we've put in place, but oftentimes I find it's, it's people with boots on the ground that have a great idea of what they're lacking and what they need. And so can you tell me what you guys need?
Well, first, as I said, having the residents involved and communicating with us does make a difference. I would say 90% of the time, if somebody we already know by name, and we can reassure that resident, we can give some backstory to help them understand the issues better. If it's somebody we don't know, we feel the responsibility to connect them to services and to do our best to have that compassion, yet have a firm approach to that this is not a sustainable living situation. But that, that resident interaction can help us in a lot, in a lot of different ways.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on the last note, if there ever are asks from, you know, I think you had mentioned the couple that was looking for bikes or something of that nature, feel free to reach out to us. I think the resources sitting up here are, you know, exponential, and we can help out with something like that. Like, I think we can probably get some bikes to them pretty quickly and at least facilitate that, so it at least works better for them. So thank you so much for the work and the help. We appreciate it.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm involved in this every day. But I, Aaron is, sorry, Aaron. Do I have a conflict? Should I not even talk about this?
No, you're fine.
Okay. So I say I'm involved in every day. You guys know I have one element of the solution, not the solution. Okay? I don't have the solution. I have one element, and it's shelter, temporary. And there are not many people that are manufacturing temporary shelter units. There's two of us. And there's billions of dollars out there, and we haven't got one order. And every, every municipality we talk to has the same thing. The, the people don't want it in their town. They don't want a little community of 30 or 40 people living like that. So we'll continue to work with this. We know Judge Carter's done what he's done, and something's going to happen. But, for example, you know, we have 40, is that 40? Can you tell us what LA has? Do you know?
60,000.
60,000. 60,000. And I, I can't, I can't give one. I can barely give a shelter away. I, I've offered to give them to this city. They didn't want them. I've offered to give them to other cities. They don't want them. So what, I'm going to keep trying. I'm not giving up. I know that eventually, I think, like Ms. Dixon said, people are getting fed up, and they're finally coming around to maybe this is a solution. Not the solution, sorry. A, a part of the solution. So I don't mean to be a big downer, but it, it is something we work on every day, and it's, I, I, I have a lot of effort monetarily in that direction. And it's very frustrating. So anyway, we, I'm not discouraged. I know that those 60,000, just in LA, I mean, talk about Seattle, talk about Oregon, Portland, you name it, San Diego, they're, this is, and it's growing. It's not, it's not going, oh, we're getting better. No, the, the virus has made it worse. So I'll be around. I'm not giving up. I'm not discouraged. It's just very, it's a struggle to keep motivated, to think that there is a, someday this will happen. But anyway, I'm, I do know how hard you guys work. And I do get all the same emails, joy that you get. And I say the same thing, and sure, we're working on it. And I think one fabulous example is along, right where Hoag Hospital is, 50, the Newport Boulevard, there was horrendous encampments all along there. There's not a single one there now. I'm so proud of you guys. Because I got a lot of emails for about three weeks, and I just kept saying, you know, we have a system. It's a, it's a, a system that has to be run through from the very start, and it takes time. And sure enough, because they always end the email with, you don't do anything. You do nothing. Nothing. Wait. Well, a week later, there wasn't a single homeless person there. So that's not true. You guys do an amazing job, and there's living proof. Thanks.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, really, to follow up on Councilmember Blom's question, what can we do? I'm intrigued. And tell me if this is not a realistic solution. If you had said, Carol, that some people are waiting for a bed in the shelter, they're ready to go, and then we'll start filling those beds, and then what happens? We halt. Is there any way we can make Project Room Key a part of our solution? And funding, obviously, is the key factor in any solution. Is it possible to use the Affordable Housing Reserve Funds that we have for affordable housing for temporary housing in a Project Room Key? Or something like, I mean, how much do we need to help people get off the beach, get off McFadden, get off the transit center? And if they're willing to go into Project Room Key, there is a, a percentage of people you're working with that are willing and just waiting. Is there some way we can help them? And how much does it, would it cost?
I think if we have that problem, that's going to be a good problem to have, because I think we're going to start first. And we're going to transition into the 20 beds because of COVID. I think they have to have the spacing. But we get up to the 20. And we have to remember, people have to be willing to be housed and go into the, into the shelter. And I think we're going to have to see what that number looks like. We don't know right now. You know, if, if it's all 20, great. That, that means it's 20 people who are willing. You know, once you go into the shelter, it's not just a housing, a temporary housing location, right? You, you're going to be entered into a program to, to help you find work, you know, to get on the path, to become sober, deal, you know? So not everybody's going to accept that from, from the start. So I, I think if we end up with that issue, that all 20 beds are used, and we have more folks who are willing to go into that, then I think we can certainly evaluate. I think part of it is the funding side, which we did use our Affordable Housing Funds for our capital contribution.
Right.
For the shelter. So, so we don't have much of a balance.
Zero now.
Yeah, yes. But, so that's one side is the funding, and the other side is to make sure, sure we have the hotel, the motels that are willing to provide that. You know, and, and the challenge with the motel, well, it's nice as a temporary transition to getting into a bed. It's not the full array of support services with it. I mean, we could provide some through our CityNet folks, but it's not the, the ideal location. So, but we can certainly evaluate and take a look at how we can maybe marry that together, if we do have the good problem of the 20 beds being utilized.
Well, I do know United Way has the apartment owners who are cooperating and, and making available apartments, too. So I guess what I'm saying is Plan A is, I'm suggesting, Plan A is obviously the 20 beds in the temporary shelter. But we have a surplus of homeless people that, a Plan B is for what, how to help a percentage, a large percentage as possible of those people through various service pathways that we can. I mean, I just don't want to say, okay, we fill the beds. That's as far as we go. Okay. But I just want you to know you're doing a great job. And given where we were two years ago, it, it is, it's, it's a difficult process. And we all see the emails you get, we get, and we, we appreciate what you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you. I completely agree with the comments, especially the good work of Cynthia and Natalie. Just tremendous. And it's such a, an intellectual, psychological game, you know, that you're involved with and trying to work with these people. And, and the victories are hard-won. And it takes a lot of, a lot of effort. And I certainly appreciate that. And I also think what you do, when we tier, kind of, who are the most employees, the most important staff, or the most important people in society, I think those people are the people that alleviate suffering. Those are people that protect the vulnerable, and that's the homeless population, as far as I'm concerned. And I think most people see that, although some of our residents still don't see that. But we've, to Mr. O'Neal's point, I think we've done a lot to educate this community. And I think the community has educated itself very well on this, because it's really a different world, as, as Mr. O'Neal said, in terms of our relationship with the community and what's coming in. And I spent about 50 minutes with a couple on the phone that were just furious about the encampment off of Newport Boulevard. And eventually, they, they were a little mollified. And then they finally got to, how can we help? So, you know, it just takes time. It wasn't a five or 10-minute conversation. And I just feel also that we can't call ourselves a great city until we get this problem more in hand, and where we are, are helping people off the streets at a greater rate. And that's, obviously, a big part of that is our permanent supportive housing. And we're working forward on that, and that's wonderful. And it's going to be expensive. And we just need the community to understand that. And it's just part of the reality. What I like to say is the conditions of which we are working, and we can't really change those conditions. We can just do the best thing we can to, if not solve the problem totally, but mitigate it substantially. And not, you know, obviously for the, for the, our residents who are very concerned about this, but mostly, I think, for those that are vulnerable and suffering. And I think it really hurts all of us on some level, even people that don't admit it to themselves, when we see people sleeping on sidewalks. It's, it's really a terrible thing. So, great job. Thank you. Do we have any public comment in the community room?
Yes, thank you. Did you hear any of the first part?
No, please go ahead again.
Okay. Mayor Avery, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher, speaking from the community room. I am curious about the ad hoc homeless committee that we heard about during the presentation. As you may recall, in March of 2019, this council created a, what was called a Newport Beach Homeless Task Force, that consisted of three city council members, and I think it was seven citizens who were appointed through the normal committee selection process, applications, review, and so forth. And then in November 2019, that committee or task force was reduced to just the three council members. But the task force came to an end. It terminated at the end of last year. This new committee is not listed on the clerk's roster, so I'm assuming it's something that was created by the city staff rather than the council. And so I'm, I'm just wondering if we have currently any transparency as to who is on the committee, how they were selected, and, just in general, who is advising the city staff? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the community room, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Appreciate the time. My name is Pete Anderson. I'm a resident down on the peninsula for, since 1976, just a few blocks from McFadden Square. You know, when we started this process of, when Newport Beach and started the process of looking at our homeless situation, the initial discussion was centered around the Martin versus Boise decision, and what the city had to do to be able to, to meet the requirements to allow them to enforce their, their anti-camping, anti-loitering laws. The discussion I'm, I'm hearing today is that, you know, it doesn't seem to be focused on that. And my question is, if, if we had, instead of 20 beds, 100 beds available, so that there was, there was always, or almost always, a, an ability for your staff to place people in shelters, would you be enforcing the, the anti-camping laws down on the peninsula?
Do you have anything else?
Pardon?
Okay. Mr. Hart?
Well, I think if you did have the shelter beds, it'd give you the ability to enforce those camping ordinances. And I think that, that'd be the direction we'd move forward with.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment from the community room? All right. Seeing, seeing none, we'll, we'll go to the phones. Do we have any phones there? All right. Thank you. Bring this back to council for any further direction to staff or comment. We're good?
Just, just one, Mr. Mayor. So in, in response to Dr. Anderson's point, the, it's a pretty, it's a, there's a long answer. But at the beginning of this process, we were looking at this primarily from a Martin versus Boise issue. And actually, we were dealing with this from a Martin versus Boise issue while Martin versus Boise was being appealed up to the Supreme Court. So the, the reason that it doesn't sound like we're solely focused on Martin versus Boise is because we are not solely focused on Martin versus Boise. We're focused on quite a few different ways, because quite frankly, the last approach you want to take to solve homelessness is using our police department. The preference would be to do many, take many steps before that. That said, if that's the last resource available, then that's the last resource available. But, but it's not like we have partnered with Costa Mesa and are paying a substantial amount of money solely for the reason of being able to enforce. It's certainly not the sole reason, because the types of services that will be available at the Bridge Shelter in Costa Mesa are substantial. And our goal is, you know, not to treat this like a drug crime, where it's kind of a catch-and-release system. That's not the goal. The goal is to work with people, convince them voluntarily to go into the shelter, get them the wraparound services, and as a last resort, enforce our anti-camping ordinances. So I, I just want to point out that we are not saying that we're, that that is an option off the table, and it's certainly not an option that won't be used. But I'm, I think we are saying that the reason it doesn't sound like we're focused entirely on that is because we're not.
All right. Now we'll go ahead and get public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Anything from the community room?
Thank you again, Mayor Avery. This is Jim Mosher. I would like to comment on Agenda Item Roman numeral 13, which is matters which city council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. The reason I'm doing so now is because during the regular meeting, when that item comes up, comment on it is normally not invited. Although ironically, tonight, the agenda item being requested is from Councilmember Brenner, to amend the council policy to allow both the public and the council to comment on these items. If you've not read your, my written comment to you, I wanted to remind you that this caused me to research the item, and I discovered that the idea that the city council has to vote at all on putting items on a future agenda, it was actually a staff recommendation from 2013. It arose because staff did not want to waste time preparing staff reports on an item that the full council may not be interested in pursuing. It was adopted by the council only on a promise from the city manager that It was adopted by the council only on a promise from the city manager that this new procedure of voting would not prevent them from discussing whether they wanted to put an item on the agenda. However, through some kind of mix-up, from June of 2013 to June of 2015, on the agendas, this was listed, together with council, council announcements, as a non-discussion item. That was a mistake. That was never the intent of this procedure of voting, to put an item on the agenda. And if you look carefully, you will find that there is, it was corrected in 2015. Since then, it's appeared as a separate item. If you read Council Policy A1, you will find that there is nothing in it that says that this is a non-discussion item. And the normal default is, if something is on the agenda, the reason it's there is for discussion. So tonight, there is every reason that there should be a discussion of whether this matter should be placed on a future agenda, that is, whether staff should be directed to prepare a report about it. In short, I really don't think, though, that the policy needs to be amended. We simply need to read it and follow it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members, I'm Joy Brenner. And the reason I'm down here talking to you about this is because it's a non-discussion item from the dais. And so I guess the biggest shock to me, once I got on council, was how little opportunity there is for us to discuss things as a group, because of the Brown Act, and that we can only talk to two other council members about an issue apart from our public meetings. And so, you know, you, it kind of, it took me a couple of years, Noah, to figure out this whole system. And after about two years of having things be brought up by any of us, and thinking, oh, I'd like to ask a question about what that is, that they want to put on the next agenda, but not being able to do that, that I started to think, you know, this doesn't seem quite right. It doesn't seem like you should lose your ability to speak when you're on the council. So I agree with the initial assessment that we don't want to spend staff time developing a report on something that the entire council doesn't want to have on a future agenda. But if one of us brings up an item, and says they'd like to have it on a future agenda, and another one of us wants to ask, well, what do you mean by that, or what is that exactly? It just doesn't seem right that we don't have the ability to have a little bit of discussion. And so in talking to Grace and Aaron this week about this, I said, so how do I explain to the council why I even asked that this be put on a future agenda? And they said, well, you can send an email to Leilani to put in the packets, or you can speak during public comments. And it just seems kind of silly, that one of us would have to speak during public comments in order to communicate with our fellow council members. So that's the purpose of me being down here and talking to you from this angle today. But it, it does bring back fond memories of when I used to be here all the time.
Thank you, Joy. All right. Any other comments in the community room? Any phone calls? No phone calls? All right. Before we adjourn to closed session, Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with real property negotiators Simone Juergis and Lauren Whitlinger, to discuss real property negotiations for an interest in roughly 845 square feet of public right-of-way adjacent to 929 Circle and 944 Vialito, as all that set forth under Agenda Item 4, Number A. Thank you.
Okay. We're adjourned to 5:45? Okay. We're adjourned.